Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the board to enter into a debate with members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which board members would like to remove for separate discussion and action? Seeing none, um, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Croner. Is there a second? Thank you, um, Mr. Gerroes. Is there any comment on the consent agenda? All right, is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Mrs. Glonte, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Gerroes?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, recognitions, Mrs. Milfeld, please.
Yes, thank you. The WASB Member Recognition Program presented recognition certificates and pins for board members who attained a new level of leadership in board development. President Mike Meyer attained a Level 1 recognition. Mike was unable to attend the regional meeting when the WASB presented awards, so the certificate and pin was sent to the district. And as Mr. Meyer is humble, I have already given him his certificate and pin, but I congratulate him.
Thank you, Mrs. Milfeld. Mrs. Rios, please.
The Wauwatosa West Mock Trial Team qualified for the state level of the Wisconsin State Bar's mock trial competition for the first time in its 12-year history with their exemplary performance in the Waukesha region, winning nine of 12 ballots and earning 713 points out of a possible 880. The team has worked since summer to analyze a civil case in which the jury must determine the negligence of a high school student who hit another student who was crossing the street at a place with no crosswalk. Using a combination of critical thinking and theater, the team prepared and presented both the plaintiff's and respondent's sides of the case portraying both attorneys and witnesses. They will compete at the state competition at the Dane County Courthouse in Madison on Sunday, March 9th. Team members are, and I apologize if I don't pronounce any of these names correctly, John Schmutzer, David Brooke, Mark Salamon, Nina Best, Charlie Coop, Maddie Carroll, Sam Frederick, Morena Liston, Justine Langlass, Alex Stansik, Julie Johnson, Sharia Brown, Morgan Zigmunt, Joe Laspeiza, Ernie Laspeiza, Miriam Ashraf, Chrissy Hembrook, and Alan Witzkowski. The team is coached by Tosa West Social Studies teacher Stephen Oliver, attorney Lindsay Draper, Megan Harney, and Sabat Hat Ali. And sorry for missing on you.
You did fine. Thank you very much.
And that's a great accomplishment. That would be very interesting to see.
Well, thank you. I've been asked before we start our action items portion of the agenda that I mention that the last item on our agenda is a presentation regarding opportunities for butterfly-friendly plantings on school grounds. So if any of you who are here wish to stick around all the way to the end, I'm sure it will be a very interesting presentation, so just please keep that in mind. So with that, we'll move to the action items, administrative appointment. Mr. Croner, please, will you read the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. It is recommended that the school board approve the administrative appointment of Jack H. Bothwell as Director of Human Resources for her 229-day annual contract from February 26, 2014 to June 30, 2015, at a salary of $120,000, prorated to days worked, and I so move.
Thank you, Mr. Croner. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Randall. Is there any board discussion or comment?
Mr. Meyer, can I introduce?
Oh, yes, please.
Jack is with us, sitting in the assumed seat of the HR director already, so we're fortunate to have Jack come and work with us. He originally started out, until your vote is final, he is still the interim director. But he's worked with us and really been a great opportunity for us to have that level of expertise. Jack has been a teacher, a principal, a director of HR, and most recently in Waukesha, and he still is doing some part-time, has been doing some part-time work in Waukesha. But we're fortunate to be able to have him and his expertise here with us as the director of HR. Jack, do you want to make any comments?
Just to say, part one, learn how to do the microphone. Just to say, it's really a pleasure to be here in Wauwatosa School District. It's such a lucky person to be able to try out the job and know that there's good chemistry. I like the people I'm working with, and after some, a really deep look at the district, I'm feeling very fortunate in being here. So it'll be a lot of excitement to be part of the many, many developments and exciting things that are going on in the school district.
Thank you. Is there any community comment? All right. Well, Mrs. Glonte, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Gerroes?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, motion carries, seven zero. Next, we'll move to the teacher ladder compensation system item. Mrs. Fee, please read the motion.
Certainly. It is recommended that the school board approve the Wauwatosa Teacher Career Letter Compensation System and authorize the administration to prepare individual contracts for teachers, which include 2014, 2015 salaries consistent with the Wauwatosa Teacher Career Letter Compensation System. The increase shall consist of a 0% base wage increase and a 4.9% supplemental increase in the aggregate, and I so move.
Thank you, Mrs. Fee. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Gerroes, thank you. Dr. Earl, you have a presentation? Is that correct?
Yes, I do, thank you. First of all, I just want to say that I'm proud to be able to sit here in front of you and follow up last board meeting's presentation and give the information back that was requested, along with a little bit more and a little bit of an update and a reminder of what we're doing here. I think this vote is probably one of the biggest votes and biggest changes for our school district in a positive way. The impact, I think, is going to be long-term and have an extremely positive impact on our district. I'm also proud of the work that has gone into this, from the committee members to all the feedback that we've received, our administrative team, and feedback from the school board as well, so thank you. Again, what the system is and what it's designed to, attract and retain the best teachers and pay that at a pay level that keeps Wauwatosa financially competitive now and down the road. There is flexibility built in to make sure that we continue to do that. Provide a financial incentive for all teachers regardless of level, to perform at the highest level, to help us identify underperforming teachers, to provide support and growth opportunity, or to counsel them out of our school district, and not to have an endpoint for salary growth for the highest performing teachers. Also to encourage collaborative discussions about professional growth. I know there was questions brought up that it's going to create competition, and I would argue completely the opposite. And when you look at some of the leadership components that are required, and I'll get into those in a bit, it really talks about the minimum standard is being able to share and work together with teachers. The leadership high-level standard is being able to grow others to be able to do that as well. It values education and experience, values professional development, and recognizes leadership. And the last bullet is the part that in particular that was brought up from the board is question, what does leadership look like? We've created a rubric, and these are the two levels, the two areas of the leadership component that we've laid out. And levels two and four are both very similar levels in the expectations. And I think it's important to point out that the expectations for levels two and four, not low expectations, these are high expectations for all of our teachers. They commit to professional growth aligned with district goals and school goals. They share instructional strategies and methods with other teachers. One of the core principles of our school district and our operational principles is our professional learning communities. To have a true professional learning community, you need everybody sharing, you need everybody working together. That's our basic level. And they engage in continuous improvement of the school culture inside the schools and beyond the walls of the classroom. So it's not just in the classroom. We expect that continuous improvement to be the core of who we are and what we do on an ongoing basis. Now, level three, at the highest level, they facilitate capacity-building opportunities for others aligned with school and district goals. They impact instructional strategies, methods in other learning environments, challenge the status quo as a positive change agent. They motivate and inspire continuous improvement of the school culture both inside and beyond the walls of the classroom. And I think you can see the common thread that goes through it when you look at leadership and what the expectations are. Leadership has a positive impact, not just on your own classroom, but on other people as well, including students and other staff members, and grows them to build into our culture as well. And professionalism, leadership and professionalism in the effective teacher rubric are clearly pointed out as two very important components of the compensation model, along with the other two components that are informed by the evaluation system that we'll be going into. Again, professionalism, levels two and four, ethical behaviors consistent with our expectations, they communicate regularly with families, contribute to professional growth of others, they demonstrate responsibility by meeting deadlines and fulfilling required obligations. This is not an unreasonable expectation, yet it's still a high expectation for all of our staff at all levels. For level three, they communicate to strengthen relationships with families and broader community on behalf of the district and building. They're an advocate for the Wauwatosa School District, they're an advocate for their building, and they're an advocate for their classroom, and everybody knows that. They act with integrity, and they model it. They research and collaborate in PLCs and design lessons and learning opportunities that deepen student learning, and engage families of students in a reciprocal relationship to foster that student learning. So they're part and parcel of our families, and are constantly trying to work with the families as well. One other thing that has changed, and we've, I wanted to make sure I pointed this out because in the new Teacher Career Letter Handbook, these are the actual pay ranges that are there. In the past, we've had it hypothetical, so as we've worked through and put placements in, and took into account the dollars that have been recommended, the top salary is $80,700. That does not include some of our, actually our guidance counselors that have extra-day contracts. We have several guidance counselors that will be above that amount of $80,700. And tops in level four is $78,750, and the others range a little bit below what those maxes are. But those actuals in level three and level four, and I think it was important to point out that extended contracts are going to be higher. We chose to take the amount of the extended contracts out because it's not attainable by everybody unless they had an extended contract. We want to put the dollar amount that is attainable at some point more from the symbolic or human resource lens, so people can truly actually see where they can go and what they can target with those amounts. Also in the handbook, part of it that was redone is we tried to remove as much of the evaluation process out of the core language of the handbook, because the evaluation is a separate component that is really not a part that we're asking the board to approve. That's an administrative guideline, and we've already moved down that path with CISA 6 Strong Model. But clearly, it intertwines with the compensation piece. Each year, there is going to be an evaluation that is done, that is going to play into the compensation, compensation model, but what you're being asked to approve is not the evaluation model. And that's why we removed it and put it to the appendix, and so all of the information that was there previously is still there, it's just moved to a different location in the handbook, so I also wanted to point that out as well. And that is the end of.
All right. Well, thank you. Are there any board questions? Mrs. Randall?
Dr. Earl, can you talk a little bit more about the evaluation process and the training that's acquired, and who will receive training, and all of that?
Sure, there is, we started out with a very small core group, trying to develop, trying, we will be developing a rollout plan. Administration has already gone through two days of training on the model. We have another day, full day tomorrow of training. Then there is going to be a broader team that's going to be led through the HR department along with several principals. Teachers will then be included into that core planning group, and then the training dates and the model will be laid out, and we'll be moving forward with it. So there's going to be a number of days of training for all staff that are being trained. The model also does entail a component for principals, so there's an evaluation model that aligns with the teacher model for principals, also for our student services staff. And then the central office model is being developed now, the superintendent model is being developed, and the board will have the option whether or not they adopt that to evaluate me. So it's a full spectrum of evaluation that's being developed, but by the start of next school year, all of the training should be in place to begin implementation of the evaluation model.
So for the classroom teacher, the building principal will be using that for their evaluation?
Correct.
Okay, and so when you say the teachers are trained on that, is that, does that mean they go through the same training with the principals, or I mean, how is it conveyed to the teachers?
It'll be, it'll be a training model for the teachers. They need to have a solid understanding.
Right.
If they're being evaluated on. Same with the principals for the principal model, and that was, we've been exposed to those as administrators, but clearly, there's, there's work to be done, and we're working with CISA 6. So they have their model laid out for training, but ours is going to go above and beyond what they've laid out for us.
Okay, and you don't have the exact timeline yet, you said?
Well, I know it'll be implemented by September 1 of next year.
Okay, I mean, the training. I know you've got, you've done some, you're doing some on Tuesday.
That's going to be part of that core team, it's going to. We want to get the teachers involved and lay those dates out with them.
Okay, so core team would include?
Principals, director of HR, and teachers.
Okay. Thanks.
So just to be sure I'm understanding what you're saying, there is, this will affect teacher paychecks beginning September of 2014?
July of 2014 with their first paycheck, yes. 14, 15 school year.
Okay, so this is for the coming school, school year?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. And the, the, nothing in this is, has, there's no base wage component in this at all? And this is reflected in the motion, just so we're making sure that's understood as well?
Correct. Right, the school board has an obligation to negotiate with the teachers' association. This is not a negotiation, there's no base wage negotiation involved in the implementation of this. This is strictly supplemental pay.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Croner, did you have a question?
I was just going to ask, we can reserve some time for board comment following public comment?
Yes, of course, that's what we usually do. Mrs. Fee?
I'm sorry. Thank you very much for clarifying and updating us from last meeting. Since that meeting, we've also received some information from the WEA. One of those was a survey which troubled me a bit in that there were several questions where at least 30% and up to almost 50% of the people responding to the first survey said that they didn't have enough information to be able to form an opinion basically to answer the question. So that tells me that we have a communication issue. So how is this going to be communicated, should that be passed tonight?
I wouldn't go so far to say, well, let's just, we will be communicating and getting information out, making sure everybody's fully aware of what the compensation model will look like. We'll begin by putting out a question and answer, or frequently asked question document that will help people get a solid understanding. Within the next, starting after approval, we will set up a principals' meeting, which has initially been, or tentatively been planned for Friday. After that, we'll start issuing letters that principals can meet with each teacher individually and explain where they're located, what their salary would be, where their level classification is, and then we'll have an ongoing process with that as well.
Thank you. It sounds like you've thought it through, and that's fairly thorough. I, the other thing that I guess it's more of a comment or a request for our president is that I really see this as something that is going to succeed or fail based on evaluations. And I know that obviously, Mrs. Randall's already asked about that and what the process is currently, but I guess I would ask our president if we could consider an agenda item for a future meeting, for an update on how that's going, perhaps before the school year starts.
Well, for the-
No, you won't be president.
For the final couple of months of my term, sure, and I'm sure-
We can make a note of that, perhaps.
Someone else in this room will be president in May, so we'll, I'm sure they've heard your request as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Milfeld?
Thank you. From what I understand, though, piggybacking on the evaluation comment, the evaluation system will be a place where the employees can also explain how they have met, met the requirements, how they, you know, have met the benchmarks, how they have demonstrated leadership. So they have input first into the process.
Yeah, and actually, they don't have an opportunity, they have an obligation that's going to be a requirement of the evaluation process. So they will be putting documents and different artifacts into an electronic archive that be showing the progress that they've made, so that certainly is going to be a component and an opportunity to go above and beyond to show, you know, not only am I just performing at a high level, I'm really exceeding, and I think that would be a good component to the evaluation system.
And just a follow-up question to the assessors in our buildings. It's clear to me that at the elementary level, it's, it's one principal, but when we're getting into the secondary schools, and while some might have observations in a classroom by associate principal or, or a principal, who will be the decision-makers for the placements?
It'll be a collaborative effort of the administrators, and we've seen that as we've been discussing, meeting with principals and associate principals in the discussions on initial placement. But ultimately, if I'm an associate principal and I'm doing the evaluation, and that's my responsibility to evaluate an individual, there's going to be obvious collaboration before those decisions are made, where the placement is and what level they're at, if they've made any movement, because the principal is ultimately responsible in the building, but they can't quite possibly even do it all alone. Which leads me to another point, that I think there is a component in our elementary buildings where there is only one administrator that we're going to start looking at. I know in the past, if somebody was a teacher, they couldn't be involved in evaluations, and I think it's time to look at a different model of how we evaluate and have people identified that aren't necessarily principals at the elementary buildings. And even at the secondary level, that can help out in evaluations, whether it's effectiveness coaches or deans of students. But it's a, it's always been a daunting task, and the span of control that principals are responsible for in their buildings has always been great in comparison to a lot of other areas of work, but it's something we need to address to try to reduce that and make it, make it better.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board comment? Or Mrs. Randall?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I meant to ask, to the initial placement on the career ladder, you showed the four criteria. The last one, principal assessment of current performance in relationship to the level three criteria. What is the evaluation model for that? Is that the one that was created by the district and the WEA?
For initial placement, the teacher, the effective teacher?
Yeah.
Rubric is, no, that was created through, through the evaluation process, and also we looked at, it started out, and that's probably why we met with each principal four different times, because it started out looking in one way, and we've developed it as we've met with the committee, and things, we started looking at changing. And then, most recently, after the board really pointed out leadership and what does leadership look like, and the development of that in our most recent run-through with each of the principals to make sure placements were appropriate, but we identified that as well as previous evaluations that were taken into account.
So it's the same process that would be used for an annual evaluation of a teacher, plus additional discussion?
No, it wouldn't be the, I mean, I can't say that it's going to be the same process because we haven't gone through the new evaluation model.
No, I'm sorry, I meant for the initial, we have an evaluation process in place now-
Correct.
Before this.
This is above and beyond that.
Okay, and so for initial placement, you're utilizing the existing evaluation plan that we have?
Correct.
Okay, and plus these other-
Yes.
Other criteria. Okay, and then, just to follow up on Mrs. Fee's question regarding communication, I guess, when I saw that on the survey, I wondered, and I don't know if anyone can help you, probably can, but people who said they didn't have enough information, I'm trying to figure out why. So there were listening sessions and people talking to their colleagues, there were these meetings, and of course, you invited questions and comments to come to you. What, what would have caused any one individual to not be able to get the information?
You want my theory?
Well, no, I guess-
I, I don't know. We've communicated on this plan more than we've communicated on anything in the past nine years. We've had more opportunity for feedback, we've begged for comments, we've gone round and round, and for me to sit here and believe that there's that many people, if, if they don't know about it, they haven't looked for it.
Okay.
I mean, we do have a lot of people that really are not-
That's entirely possible.
They don't spend their time worried about the compensation system. They spend their time about how they're meeting the needs of kids in the classroom. And that's not to say people that focus on the compensation system don't care about kids, but we have people that, their focus is, they're not going to worry about it. We have people that just said, okay, I'll take, whatever I'm paid, I'll deal with it. That may be the case, I don't know.
Okay, I, you know, when I read the survey, I thought it would have been helpful if that had been a follow-up question. You know, what kept you from getting information, so, because I don't understand, but-
Can I throw in my two cents worth on that question as well?
Sure.
I'm pretty much in agreement with Dr. Earl that there are some folks who just want to do their job, and a little disagreement with Dr. Earl, they may care what they get paid, but they trust the system to provide a reasonable decision, and then they'll decide what they want to do. So not everybody wants to get involved in this stuff at, at, at the place we're at right now, where we're deciding all the ins and outs of, you know, this, this paradigm. That's just my view. Go ahead then, please. Thank you, Mrs. Randall, for yielding the floor.
Okay, and then, there were not building-level meetings, right? Principals didn't bring together a staff and explain it yet?
No.
Okay, but I think I heard you just say that's going to start happening.
Individual.
Okay. Okay, I mean, honestly, I've, I've talked to so many people and tried to get as much information as I can, and I, I just don't understand why anybody would feel like they were unable to get information, so, okay, thanks.
Well, I'm not sure that, was that what they were asked? Or were they asked whether they had, you see, it depends on how you ask the question.
Well, right, but I mean, a lot of, it was a significant number that were identified as not having enough information.
That's a different question from, if you had reached out, would you have been able to get more information? It depends on how you ask the question.
Okay. Well, I have one quick question.
Yes, Mrs. Rios.
Can you speak to, and I think you've explained this before, but as of late, people have been asking me, do you know who's on the committee? And I just want to, if you can, just go over how the committee was formed quickly, and who was able to be on it, and what that, how that took place.
It was an open invite, and, and there was a selection of committee members, and I can't believe, I don't recall exactly how-
So there was a selection af, I mean, there was an open invite, and then from that point, it got, like, reduced, or?
And I don't remember if there were more people that signed up that weren't on the committee, I couldn't tell you for sure. That may be a possibility, it dates back quite a while.
But it wasn't, it wasn't selected, it wasn't like selecting certain-
I went out and picked people to serve on that committee, no.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional board questions? Any additional board questions or comments? Okay, saying none. Is there a community comment? Yes, please, come to the microphone and identify yourself, your name and address. And, uh, please ask, we limit it to three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Graber. I live at fourteen eleven North Sixty-third Street. I teach general music at Washington and also at Montessori. I have a couple of questions. I'm a little confused about the initial placement. In our packet, it says that we are going to be placed based on, um, our years of experience and also level three criteria, which has not yet been used to assess us. But I think, Dr. Erdl, if you'll-
No, we're not, we can't get into-
Okay, so that-
Question and answer with administration. The board may respond to your question.
All right. I feel, I think that we were just told that we were going to be ass- put in our initial placement based on former assessments and former, um, observations. So there's a bit of confusion for me on that point. And another thing I'd like to just express some concerns about the initial placement is that some of us have not been assessed or observed for nearly a year and a half to two years. And so I'm not really sure how they are going to use information they don't have to put us in a level based on what they're seeing us produce.
Is there any board comment, Mrs. Randall?
My question, um, pertained to the process, not to the actual previous evaluations. Does that make sense? In other words, they are going to do an evaluation now. They're going to use the current evaluation structure that we have, but it will also be measured against level three criteria?
Let me clarify this.
That's different than having an individual, please.
Let me clarify what-
Okay.
Yes. And what I, what I was saying, did, do previous evaluations inform their placement? Absolutely. Did we sit down with the actual evaluation document and say, well, this is where they were on their evaluation? No, but the evaluation's informed. So not sitting down with most previous evaluation and having that, um, determine placement can inform that decision.
Would you characterize the discussion you're having now with each principal as a current evaluation?
Yes.
Okay. And does that help? Okay.
Um, I'm, I'm not, please, you may come up. You didn't use your three minutes. I'm not sure you'd exactly want a previous evaluation to drive this process because this is a, a new start with a new approach. And there are components of the past, I'm sure, but there's also emphasis that perhaps wasn't emphasized in the past. So in a sense, you do want a fresh start with the priorities as you've decided to state them today. Yes, please, your comment.
Uh, some of us are also in positions of having a new administrator. And, um, if that person is one of the principal people involved in making our, that determination, I feel that that also gives me a cause of concern simply because that person is really involved and there's a lot going on in that person's plate. And, um, they know who I am. But other than hi, they have not had the opportunity to really be in my room. I do a holiday program, so there's a very visible piece of what I do. I'm just wondering about how informed, um, that person can be, given they're taking in a lot of other information this year.
Now, Dr. Erdl, do you have any comment with respect to that? I, I can say that some of these things, such as the point just raised, would be typical in any situation where you have a new boss. And that first year, they may not be the most knowledgeable advocate for, you know, your, your assessment in the organization. Um, but the assessment of a given year isn't locked into the next year. So there is not a permanency to this, as I'm understanding it. So with that, I'll take, um, any additional comments? Yes, please. Identify yourself and state your name and your address.
I'm Scott Krieger, twenty-two oh-nine North Sixty-fourth Street. I'm also, obviously, a resident here, um, but a parent as well, who moved here on the reputation about eight years ago of Wauwautosa Public Schools. Um, my wife is a teacher and I'm a teacher. And we looked extensively at where we would want to live based solely on the school system. Um, I'm sad to say that we have recently, over the last couple of months, but certainly, um, it has ramped up very recently. Um, the reason we would leave Wauwautosa is also because of, uh, the school districts. As I said, my wife is a first-grade teacher at a public school, um, Muskego, and I'm a high school teacher, um, in Greenfield. And, um, what we know, um, or, or certainly what has, uh, what has been out there is that, uh, Tosa teachers, just to begin with, are underpaid relative to their colleagues in the surrounding area. Um, that has led to widespread, uh, bad reputation within our profession. And at my school alone, uh, Tosa has been mentioned as a place to steer clear of several times this year, um, most recently on Thursday of last week. And I'm, I'm absolutely not making that up in the, the profession, um, under various contexts, not necessarily, um, you know, specifics in that regard, but under various contexts, um, Tosa's been mentioned. A lot of it has been morale and pay-driven. As far as the latter is concerned, I did have an opportunity to see the latter from a, a friend who's also a teacher. And, um, I, I, after looking at it, I would say this, it is subjective and it's merit pay. And I know we referred, uh, just a little while ago to a business model where a new boss and, and so forth. Um, research is definitive that merit pay does not work in education. Um, and I know it sounds great because the real world, you know, sort of, um, just makes it sort of sound like merit pay is, is a fact of life everywhere. But I, I would challenge you to find research that supports merit pay. Um, additionally, I would also say that it, this is not a competitive salary model. Um, in Greenfield, we're going through a compensation creation piece as well. And as a function of information that's been supplied to us there, I, I, I would say that it's not competitive. And, and I'm more familiar with districts south of I ninety-four, but it's not competitive with a Greendale or a South Milwaukee. It's, it's not competitive of, from, uh, with what I know of, our, uh, uh, compensation pa- um, model that's, that's sort of entering its final stages in Greenfield. So, uh, this system relies on subjective judgments, I think, which were, were just pointed out um, just by one teacher. I, you know, my thing is, I, we've heard a presentation from sort of one side, um, you know, and, and I understand that, that there have been listening sessions and things of that nature, but there's questions, I think, good questions by board member Fee, who said, you know, that, that on some of these things, there's a survey where fifty percent of people are indicating confusion and things. I think that strikes at the heart of what I have heard about Tosa in terms of low morale. Uh, you know that you have fifty percent, in some cases, of teachers who are not aware of something. And, and we're not asking teach- I don't, uh, maybe we'll hear it. I, I don't hear teachers or people who put out the survey or, or being asked the questions. I mean, I hear theories, but, um, we, we haven't seemed to involve teachers. So my huge, huge questions as a parent, and my wife and I talk about this regularly because for us, we know that the most important app, the most important piece in the school district is the teacher. And, um, so my questions are, uh, you know, can we say that teachers support this model? I mean, that's the most important piece. Can we say that teachers support this? And if we don't know, why are we voting on it tonight? Um, secondly, you know, um, has the school board listened to anyone else other than primarily administration? Uh, I'm not alone about living here for the schools, and there are just too many reasons for good teachers to leave.
I'm going to give you a time warning.
Okay. I'm wrapping up right now, but i- i- in this free agent sort of world, uh, that the state legislation is- you know, w- we appear to be missing opportunities to make staff feel respected and valued. And I am not going to send my daughter, um, to a school with a teacher who does not, who feels underpaid, undervalued, and under-respected via a compensation system. So, thank you.
Is there any other comment?
Can I respond to a couple of things?
Yes.
So I'm a former teacher as well of ten years, and I would argue that this is not merit pay because merit pay is based on student achievement. And correct me if I'm wrong, but that's not right part of this.
Correct.
And so I, I don't think that this is merit pay. And we're not, I mean, that's just my observation, also being someone in education. And the, one of the values that I saw in this was that the committee that really is responsible for creating it, and I have communicated personally with many teachers, is that they were part, they were really the driving force in constructing this. It wasn't constru- and I, you, I have communicated with them. Um, and I understand that sometimes, and that's why I asked the question about the committee, because I think there's some confusion about that, because in other times, sometimes committees have been seen as being like an avenue for implementing different plans. Um, and it's my understanding that this committee was open and the teachers that I've spoken that were involved in it thought that it was, their input was received. Um, so that's what, two things I can say to address some of theirs.
Um, let's see if other people have a comment before we give people a second go around at the microphone. Is, oh, Miss, yeah, Mrs. Randall, you may respond, please.
All right, thank you. Yeah, y- you know, we, we often have individuals come to the meeting and, um, share what you have shared, your, your perceptions or what you've heard from people. And, um, you know, there's much, much more to share. My conversations with staff, with WEA, with community members, with administrators, with teacher after teacher after teacher. Um, so we all do bring our own, our own experience and information that we've gathered. But I, this has been, um, a very long process. It's been a very difficult process. Um, I have taken great pains to gather information to be heard, to ask questions, to research, um, beyond this district and beyond this state, to make sure that this very huge decision is, is the right one for all of us. And, um, so it's difficult. And I, I've said, I, I'm not going to sit at meetings anymore and accept, um, you know, an overall impression that people are running away from Wauwautosa. It is not, it's not happening. Um, I have a daughter employed in the South Milwaukee School District. You know, we talked to other board members, we talked to other staff members. And, you know, I do respect, um, what your, your observations and certainly your choice to find the best fit for you and your family, and that's great. But this is very exciting. And as Mrs. Rios pointed out, it's grassroots. Um, I don't think our teachers are going to be intimidated. I think our teachers are going to be challenged, um, to be the best they can be. I think they have every opportunity to embrace it. And, um, as a board member and at a policy level, anything that I can do to help with implementation and, and continuous support, I will absolutely be doing that.
Is there any other community comment?
Good evening. I'm Jeff Hancher. I teach at Jefferson Elementary School. I'm also president of Wauwautosa Education Association. I just want to bring up one, uh, issue that I've talked to teachers about that they're really concerned. It's about, um, fairness and goes back to the, um, the survey we, we sent out. And one of the survey questions talking about, do you feel confident that your administrator would give you a, a fair evaluation? And that was pretty low, that they didn't feel confident. So you, you expressed to us that this is a model that you want to pursue, but the teachers that are being evaluated by their administrators, they don't feel confident. They feel that it could be subjective. And especially in the elementary school where our curriculum is changing constantly, being evaluated on our teaching techniques is not fair. And going back to the, to teacher that from Washington, having a new administrator, uh, making a decision, it would be cause, it would be a, a cause for concern. I would want my experience of all the years that I've taught in here be included when we start doing this, when we start placing people. I, I think that, um, just going back to that survey, I think there's a, there's a real concern among teachers that they don't, they are not going to be fairly evaluated, that it's going to be subjective and their, uh, favoritism and how, how each principal views what leadership is and some of the other categories, I think is going to be cause of concern because it's going to be different for different principals. Now, I know people have said, no, there, it isn't going to be. But I'm just telling you, going by that survey, I don't know if that's true or not. If you look at that survey, teachers are not convinced that they're confident, the principal, being stretched real thin, as we've heard, that a teacher here has not been, uh, observed to be evaluated in a fair and just manner. Thank you.
I'm going to respond to that. Um, this evening, we hired a very experienced HR director. And, uh, that position will have a role in all of this process, no doubt. I will also say that I've, it's been communicated to me by Dr. Erdl and, and that the administrators themselves will be subject to review and professional development and assessment as to the quality of the, the assessments that they are doing. So this is, um, a cutting-edge paradigm we are adopting. And the entire organization is going to have to assume, um, new perspectives and accept being assessed by their, um, their superior, their manager, their boss, their administrator. It won't be only the teachers who are being assessed. It will be the building administrators as well. So are there any other community comments? Um, there's a person who hasn't spoken yet, who was, um, bravely approaching.
Hello, my name is Kathy Rastner and I teach at, uh, Wauwautosa West. And, um, just to comment on the people that were in part of the committee, I know there were people that were invited in the committee in the beginning, but then were no longer invited. So I'm not quite sure how, why that was, but I do know that there were some people at our school that were on the committee that were somehow just then not. So take that for what it wa- for what it is. Um, the other thing is, I know that Dr. Erdl has said, um, things about he wants us to be leading in a variety of ways, but, um, I would really like, I, I'm sorry, I'm going to get emotional here. I would really like Wauwautosa to be leading, but maybe in a different way. You know, maybe in a way that we could have the teachers work with the board, work with the administration. And I don't see this plan doing that. I just see, I don't, I don't understand how you're going to have a teach, a principal be an advocate, um, as well as be the person that determines your pay. I would really, I really want Wauwautosa to be a community that works together. And I just don't think this plan, the way it is right now, um, I think it can be, but I think it needs, it needs some, some changes to do that. But I mean, to me, that's what I envisioned Wauwautosa as, and I've been here since nineteen eighty-four. And, um, I love this place. And I'm really frightened what this is going to do. So I just wanted you to know that. Thank you.
Yes.
All right.
Please, approach again.
Uh, just to clarify, um, merit pay is defined as, uh, salary that's tied to management's assessment of a teacher's performance or an assessment of the outcomes that a teacher generates, which are typically referred to as student test scores. But an assessment of teacher performance is in fact merit pay. I understand that, um, the, the, um, s- some districts are, are leaning toward, well, you're just going to have to. Um, when you have subjectivity associated with a profession like ours, um, in- When you have subjectivity associated with a profession like ours engages, how, how is that defined? Is it, is it defined in a rubric, uh, uh, in the exact same way across all schools by all administrators? If I have a, um, an assistant principal who's assessing me and used to be a, um, FIAID teacher, and, and he's now assessing me in my language arts classroom, um, it does engages look the same, uh, according to all administrators? Uh, those are real concerns. Uh, that's not being pursued in many districts that I'm aware of, and I, I get that it is in some, um, but it is, uh, not going to leave Wauwatosi with a competitive advantage. And, um, I, I think we'll, two years from now, we'll find out. But, uh, there is some strong reservation regarding, uh, subjective judgments of teachers' profession. When you have people who have perfected their craft over X amount of years, um, and haven't been observed in a year and a half, and are now having their salary, the business side to our profession, you know, the emotion and the heart and everything, let's just assume they all have that. All of our teachers care strongly. But when you're talking about the business side of our profession, um, and you're talking about, you know, people are gonna be trained for four days, and then a, a placement is gonna be determined, you know, one-on-one conversation. So if, if I get trained for four days, can I assess a doctor? Um, it's, it's, it's not logical, and it's certainly not gonna be competitive, and it erodes morale. So, thank you.
Is there any other community comment? Saying none. Is there any board comment? Mr. Croner, please.
Thank you. Um, it's been interesting listening to comments and following this process. Over the years, I've probably been more critical than I needed to be of some big initiatives in the district. I look at things pretty carefully, and I come down on one side or the other, and I pretty much say what I think about it. And I have to say, um, in this particular process, one thing that has impressed me, one thing that I've always felt uncomfortable about for some programs in the past, is that they came through pretty quickly, and I didn't feel like I could get a good handle on what was going on and what the effect might be. In this particular case, I'm very much impressed with the slow pace that this has developed in the district. I'm very much impressed with the collaborative nature of how this came about. I understand the survey, that there are a number of employees who don't understand enough, maybe to make a decision on, on how they feel about it, but everywhere I've worked, there have been a group of people like that, for whatever reason. It's difficult when things are being developed to reach every single employee equally. I have a feeling, I'm, I'm gonna be a very strong supporter of this. I have a feeling that this is gonna make Wauwatosi a destination district, and getting up there and, and saying that negative things about the reputation of Wauwatosi, how truly you think they are, I don't think is helpful in the least. I think the board in general, if they approve this, is showing how much they stand behind the teachers. There's gonna be a four point nine percent aggregate wage increase in the district. Now, if our average wages have fallen back a little bit through union negotiations, through state funding problems, through whatever, we're, at least I, as a board member, we're trying to make that up. You can't make all that up overnight. Four point nine percent wage increase to me is, is a pretty big increase, and I wasn't expecting to see that this year. And I'm happy to give it, 'cause I think the teachers that stay in the district, that work hard, deserve the money that they're gonna get. Um, we're all here because we want students to learn. But from a board perspective, and it, and as a member of, a citizen of Wauwatosi, you also want a school district where employees feel comfortable and, and know that they can develop stable careers. Because without that, you're not gonna have student learning. So I, I think this is gonna be a really good plan. I think in a few years, this is gonna make Wauwatosi, um, a destination district, if it, more so than it is now. I think it's gonna have a strong effect on student learning. Is it perfect? Probably not right now. But there's a saying, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good, and I think this is very good right now. The administration has shown to me that they're very concerned about putting something together that's meaningful, that as we move forward, there are changes will be made. Not everything in here might be, work out the way we think it's gonna work out right now, but that will quickly be changed. The intent is to provide a system where teachers feel valued, and that they work hard because they know they'll be rewarded for that, and that leadership is not simply serving on a committee, but helping out teachers that might need a little help in the classroom, or teachers seeking help that realize they have a deficit in something that they're trying to bring to the classroom. So I, I think in the long run, this is gonna do great things for the teaching in Wauwatosi. I think eventually the teachers that stay and are comfortable and learn the system are gonna do very well. I have great confidence that the administrators are gonna put, um, take it very seriously to look after the employees in their buildings, and I, I really think it's the right way to go for the district.
Thank you, Mr. Croner. Mrs. Randall, did you have a comment?
Uh, no, I, I think that's a good note to end on.
I agree. Anyone else? Oh, thank you, Mr. Croner. So, Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Deroz?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, motion carries, seven, nothing. Thank you, Dr. Earl. Deep breath. We will now move to the Student Services, um, portion of our agenda. Mrs. Muehlfeld, please, will you read the motion?
Uh, yes, thank you. It is recommended that the school board approve revisions to Policy five-five-one-zero, use of tobacco by students as presented at the February tenth meeting, and I so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Deroz, thank you for the second. Is there any, um, administration comment in addition to what was done last week?
Nope.
Okay, is there any board question or comment? Is there any community comment? Saying none, Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Deroz?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, motion carries, seven, nothing. Now, Reports section of the agenda is next, Student Services. We have a Student Services Audit Report. Um, Dr. Earl, please, will you introduce our distinguished presenter?
Certainly. Elise Forte was here with us this evening. She conducted a Student Services Audit, um, this past school year, and she's here to share the results of it. I'm gonna let her introduce herself and, um, talk a little bit about her qualifications. She's done audits across the country as well as, well, she's done audits in the state of Wisconsin as well as across the country, um, and has done work extensively in this area, and is widely considered an expert, and we're fortunate to have been able to secure her services to do this for us, and she's gonna share some of the information from the results of that.
Good evening. This is Ann. I'm good. Uh, first of all, um, well, a little bit about my background. I'm currently faculty at University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee campus, have been between UW-Madison and UW-Milwaukee for the last... I, I'm, I'm learning not to say this anymore, because it's getting to be too many years, but it's about twenty-five years, a little bit more than that. So had been a Director of Student Services and Special Ed for fifteen years during that time, because I was adjunct at UW-Madison. So, um, and currently do most of my collaborative work with the University of Madison. Um, as Dr. Earl said, as far as other evaluations, I have done a significant amount of evaluations from Boston Public Schools to San Francisco, Atlanta, to Kocana, so from very small districts to very large districts. I have to say, it's been a real honor to do the evaluation here in Tosa for so many reasons. Number one, it's, it's my home. I don't live here, but it's my area as far as Milwaukee. And the second part is, it's an absolutely wonderful district. So I know I'm preaching to the choir, but, um, I think the evaluation is detailed. There are things that we need to do on behalf of students with disabilities, and students that are African-American, and students of high poverty, but there's a lot to leverage the work on to go forward. And so what I tried to do within the report is say, here's what's going well, and if we tie these pieces together, what does it look like? So I'm gonna go through, uh, the executive summary, which I think you have a copy of, as well as the larger report, but I'm not gonna go through the larger report, because we'd be here a very long time. So, um, but if you have questions, what I'd like to do is, is just give a general summary, and then open it up for questions. Does that work for everyone?
Yeah.
You're good? So, and how the report is set up is really looking at best practice. And I, I try to make sure that it made sense for people with a lot of information around education, and people that may not have as much information, and by that, really providing some recommendations and references for those recommendations. But the other part of it is contextualizing it within what's going on nationally as well, because Wauwatosi isn't the only school district that's struggling with achievement for kids with disabilities, and students that are African-American and students of poverty. And it's a national phenomenon, and so why is that? However, there are districts that are closing the achievement gaps. And, and so what is it that they're doing, and how are they doing it? So it's set in the context of nationally, what's going on in best practice. And, and I think, just to give a, a brief summary of that, is school districts historically have been set up when children weren't successful. So if they weren't successful within the general education classroom, we removed them. That's what we did. They went someplace else, and, um, you know, my history was, I was a special ed teacher, and so when children went someplace else, we have special ed teachers. Now we have, is that supposed to be dingy? Now we have, I'll just listen to it. So, but now we have other-
We can deal with it. Can we, um?
It's okay. So, so we also have interventionist, and we have a variety of different expertise that's typically outside the general classroom. Now, Wauwatosi has made significant moves to move all kids within general ed and provide that support within general ed, but not all the pieces are there. But, so we're, we're leaving a deficit-based model, so that when kids aren't successful... Thank you. When kids aren't successful, when they went someplace else, what we created was, was a situation where the students that needed the most comprehensive education, the most cohesive instruction, were the students that were responsible for synthesizing information from a variety of different sources and trying to bring it back to the core curriculum. It's difficult to do. So school systems who have figured that out, and you have a lot of the pieces of the puzzle going in the right direction, have tried to invert that model, that it doesn't make sense to put the responsibility of synthesizing that core curriculum on a child who typically, if they're a struggling learner, are least capable of synthesizing the information. And quite honestly, they're missing information while they're doing that. And so it's difficult, and they're missing information that they're tested on, and then we look at the achievement scores. So what we wanna do is build a really proactive model where we can take the expertise of all our teaching staff, and there's a significant amount of expertise here, and build capacity. And so we got used to putting a bandaid on a system, and so the lens that I looked through to do this evaluation was really, what would it take to build a proactive system that built teacher capacity, that they could share their expertise across each other, which means, I'm gonna talk a little bit about co-planning, and that we can see a change as far as in student achievement. Within the report, there's a significant amount of data. I tried to summarize it on the second page of the executive summary. I'm not gonna go over it, but to say, um, there are significant learning gaps between students with disabilities, students of poverty, and students that are African-American. There's also significant, um, overlap in some of those groups. There's a significant referral rate to special education of African-American students. So there's about sixteen percent of the school district, as far as student population, is African-American, but often thirty-six to forty percent of, um, the referrals for special education are African-American. And so what we want, what, what the State Department looks at, and what, what, quite honestly, best practice looks at, is we want referrals to match the percentage, so that we have natural proportions versus disproportionality. And so we're, we're seeing some disproportionality that's, that's not appropriate, and that we don't wanna see. I think, um, teachers feel like they don't have all the information. They wanna be effective, but they need more information to be effective, and so I'm gonna talk a little bit about how to pull that together. The other part is, which I think you know this, and I don't need to go over it, is the difference in achievement scores for kids of poverty, African-American, and special ed. And the reason I'm talking about more than just students that are eligible for special education is because that's the funnel. So we tend to recommend and refer kids of poverty, and children that are African-American, and children of color, and, um, for services. So I did a significant look at, just quantifiably, what's going on within the district, and then I met in all the schools and did focus groups of all the teachers and administrators, and, um, and then with that information, there are, uh, five themes, and as you can see on page three, there are sub-themes underneath the themes. And so the five themes are, for people that don't have copies of this, in front of them, culture, infrastructure, service delivery, teaching and learning, funding and compliance. Now, I have to say, just as a disclaimer, I don't work with the Department of Public Instruction. This is not a compliance audit. It is an evaluation of best practice. So, but we will talk just a little bit about compliance. At any rate, then, um, and then I looked at what, what's going on quantifiable within the, these, uh, subgroups, and then what were teachers saying about it, and then where were the disconnects, and where were the connectings? And then made recommendations based on best practice. So the recommendations are set up under, under the sub-themes, and so one of the first sub-themes was the culture of what's going on as far as how people are feeling. And this was very interesting. So, you know, it's, the district has, um, set goals around student learning, and the goals are, are based on acceleration. They're based on trying to get as many students possible in accelerated environments, which, uh, is a, is a practice that school districts across the country are doing when they want to improve student learning, because what the data is telling us is that ability grouping and remediation isn't working, that quite honestly, ability grouping and remediation may have gotten us into the achievement gaps scenario that we're in. And so, because when we track students nationally that have been pulled out, the students that are pulled out the most often into ability groupings are the furthest behind, and some people will say, you know, which comes first, the chicken or the egg? And, and really what we know is that when we compare student groupings nationally, that the more a child is pulled out, the further behind they are. So it's, it's not that they actually were behind for some other deficit. Um, so, so what we know about that, if that's true, then acceleration is important. When I did some interviews, it was very clear across the district that there were some cultural things going on as far as when students are eligible for special education, there seems to be a lower perception of achievement for them, that the expectations may go down. And so, and, and that's not, and the important thing is, I go through some of this, this is not a fault thing of, of individual teachers or administrators. It's systemic. It has happened nationally, and it has happened in this district, and so what we wanna do is acknowledge it, and then move beyond it. And I, and I hope that that makes sense. Um, so when we look at it as far as what the goals of the district were, there were perceptions that, that the goals for AP, that not all kids, were actually considered in that goal of the district, especially students with disabilities, which says something to me as an outside evaluator, and basically what that says is that our perception of students with disabilities may not be that they can do as well as other kids, and may not be able to function in AP classes, uh, which, which is exactly why the district needs a goal like that, because that's the kind of thinking that we have to interrupt. Because when we think about students with disabilities, I think one of the misnomers is that, uh, they all have intellectual disabilities. One to two percent of your student population has intellectual disabilities. So the other percentage do not, which is about twelve, thirteen percent. So twelve percent. So when you think about that, if only one or two percent do, yet when we look at the percentage of kids in AP classes that have disabilities, it's pretty minimal, if not at all. And how many kids are taking the ACT, ACT test as far as students with disabilities, pretty minimal. And so how, how do those expectations evolve, and, and what are we gonna do to interrupt them? So culturally, there is an expectation of low achievement for kids with disabilities, kids that are African-American, and students that are of low poverty. So what we wanna do about that is to create a better understanding in the importance of acceleration versus ability grouping, which is difficult, because it's been a past practice nationally. I did put references in here, as I said earlier, Jeanne Oaks, there's a lot of work around that, um, as far as helping us understand why ability grouping hasn't been as effective as we would have hoped it would be, uh, and there's a tremendous amount of statistics. And in the larger report- And in the larger report, what I tried to do is include some of that backup information. And then really looking at what are the core principles of practice for this district in order to leverage the work forward? So I started out saying that there are so many good things going on here. So how do we pull that together and then define clearly, what is it everyone's gonna do, all going in the same direction? And so what I heard from teachers very clearly is, they're confused around the how. So, they're there on serving all kids. It was very clear between general ed teachers and special ed teachers that the shared ownership for all kids was clearly there. That's not true in every district. I'm just gonna say that. And so sometimes you have to start with the ownership. So I was in a school district in Ohio on Friday and Saturday and that's not there. And so it's very difficult when that's not. So when I say that you have some, you have many things that you can leverage the work forward on, that's one of them. And it will be, it, it needs to be the expectation of the administrative team as well as teacher teams in order to do that work to go forward. Uh, some other things that came up were around climate and voice. And so the, many teachers felt like they weren't part of a decision-making model around what to do next, so how do we go forward? So I did address this by talking about developing teams at the district level and at the building level, really looking at proactive, proactive service delivery models. And also looking at how do we deliver services if in fact we wanna interrupt ability grouping? And so what does universal design for learning look like? And the staff have had information on this, I know that. Usually, most districts will say you can never have enough. But the districts that do it more and teachers become more practiced and they can share with other teachers, because sometimes the best way to share instructional strategies is teacher to teacher. Um, the better they become and the more we see the achievement gaps dissipate. The other part of it was person-first language. So how we talk often defines how we think. And there was some significant amount of language where we talked about the student's deficit first. And so what I mean by that is, um, instead of saying a child with a cognitive disability or a child with autism, we might say the autistic child. And there are other things that were said that are kind of code words for. So, the runner, um, that child's a flight wreck. And so those are words that we wanna get away from because it perpetuates a deficit model that we constantly concentrate on the negative versus the positive. And so, um, person-first language from administrators, from parents, from all of us. Because in so many ways, schools have taught parents. I've had parents say to me, you know, I have three kids. I have a second grader, a fourth grader, and an autistic child. And I thought, hmm, we've taught them to do that. So, and it, it is, it's a mistake across the country. So, this gets into a little bit more detail around the infrastructure. But in order to go forward around all kids, that there has to be an infrastructure within the district office that is an overarching infrastructure, taking student services and student learning under teaching and learning for all kids. And that it has to be very intentional. So you have those two departments. The recommendations I'm making are those two departments line up. I didn't say within the report exactly how, but that, that a organizational structure is created where that both departments own the teaching and learning of all children. Because what staff are saying is, they felt like they were receiving mixed messages sometimes and the, the messages came out at different times. And so that makes, that fuels confusion. And so, and we don't have time for confusion. So, we wanna make sure that we build a structure. The other thing is that proactive districts are doing is, we, we really don't, the structures that are in place that were based on categorical areas, learning disability, significant learning disability, cognitive disability, speech and language, have gone away in the sense of they become proactive support cross-categorically at a building level instead of by disability area. And so really looking at how we can align even the services at the coordinator level, the diagnostic level, across curriculum and instruction. So student learning and student services. So those positions are actually line up and that teams of administrators are working with school districts to be proactive, to build teacher capacity around all students. All right. You want me to stop for any questions? You want me to keep going?
Could you just illustrate what you were just talking about? Could you give like a mini example of that alignment?
Uh, so, as far as, I can use, I'll use Hinsdale Public Schools in Illinois. So, Hinsdale Public Schools have aligned their director of teaching and learning and their director of student services and special ed. And they've been aligned together as really, they're both called directors of teaching and learning. And then the semicolon, one has more expertise in one area and so special ed and student services, and one has more expertise in curriculum instruction. But it really is intended to, to push the collaboration of shared ownership because it's so easy for us to fall back to our silos. But then when you look at the other levels, so when, the coordinators within this district, there are coordinators under student learning and there are coordinators under student services, and they don't work together. So, how do you, how do you really take down those silos so that they work together at different grade levels, schools, et cetera? Does that make more sense?
Yeah, uh-huh, thank you.
All right. Along with that comes the whole idea of transformational roles, that what does this mean for our roles? And, and what does it look like? And I think the roles of special ed teachers have been changing. The roles of general ed teachers have been changing. They feel those changes and they, and they're not fighting those changes, that it feels good and right and that's the, you know, that's the leverage point within this district. But at the same time, those same, same roles in evolution is, is happening with administrators as well. And so very clearly being able to help people through that and give them the information they need to be more successful will be important. And then that includes counselors. So, as far as school counselors, there was a significant amount of discussion as far as the roles and daily responsibility. And that's, um, within the report, but really pulling them together, understanding what are the principles of practice within this district to get to the goals that the district has already set up around all learners. And so, um, examples of principles of practice that are listed in the report, but districts need to come up with those on their own. As far as what it should look like for this district may be different than what it looks like for Oconomok. But they're having some of the same discussions and what it looks like for other districts. But some of the principles of practice are, you know, the, the system-owned student failure, which, which basically sets the tone of that when children are not successful, do we look at what we could've done differently within the system or do we blame the child? Uh, that, that when we believe that all students should be part of the core instruction, then we have to really set our infrastructure and our service delivery models around the core instruction instead of someplace else. And when we set them around the core instruction, exactly how do we do that at grade level? Uh, I did look at service delivery teams and I looked at staffing patterns within special ed. I, I have to say, this is, this is a bit of a hiccup. This is the hard point. Special ed is not staffed as well here as they are in other districts. And so that's a point that has to be discussed. So it's not staffed as well as far as number of students with disabilities to special ed teachers. So as far as their caseloads. But the second part is it's not staffed as equitably across buildings. And so to really look at a more transparent approach as well as are there ways to reallocate funds in order to increase supports? Because what we wanna be able to do is create a model where at the, at the grade level, that, that we can create teams of grade-level teachers, so the content teachers. So we'll use fourth grade, for example, and a special ed teacher that works with that fourth grade team as much as possible. So we wanna be able to align them to grade level because that's the structure that's set up within the system versus setting up an artificial structure someplace else. You're good? And then just looking at a couple other things that I wanna talk about as far as, I looked at alternative ed at the high school and early childhood, so both ends. And, you know, there were, and I looked at the ARC within the high schools and the positive things and the negative things, and that's in the report. But recommendations of really looking at how to use that alt-ed staff more proactively versus reactionary. And then the recommendations for early childhood of exactly where should four- and five-year-olds attend school? If you have a disability and should they attend the school they would attend if not disabled at four and five? And where do three-year-olds actually receive instruction in early childhood, special ed? And the state said about four or five years ago, the recommendation was that children with disabilities at the age of three, four, and five should receive instruction in the natural environments, which is often childcare, et cetera, which actually, it, it basically pushes our, our special ed, early childhood teachers to be more itinerant in nature because they're providing support in a range of different environments versus clustering children in one environment. So there's some work there as well. I am gonna talk just a few minutes about response to intervention because I'm sure you've heard it a variety of times. Response to intervention was buried in the special ed regulations and IDA at the federal level. However, it's a general ed regulation. It's being worked on through the Department of Student Services here. Um, it's, it's, and I didn't actually address it differently as far as moving it to student learning because that's not the issue. The issue is, how do you take both departments and work together? Response to intervention was intended as a proactive framework of how to proactively support all kids. It was never intended to ability group kids at tier levels. Um, and then we're gonna go back and, so as we said before, ability grouping hasn't shown to be the most effective way to increase student achievement. And yet, we continue to do it through our RTI model. So, and our ITI, our RTI model, our response to intervention model, ends up being our funnel into special education referrals. And so really looking at what response to intervention should look like. Uh, what the RTI Center at the State of Wisconsin has said is that they made a terrible mistake, that they've spent way too much time looking at a range of different interventions at tier two and tier three, instead of really talking about what does high-quality instruction look like at tier one. And so it's clear that that discussion has been happening here and, and, and I would encourage that it continue to happen and that we look at universal design for learning on how we teach kids and that, at grade-level teams of teachers have to be able to work together and teach all kids. And so that means that we have to create planning time for them to work together to teach all kids. And so a lot of times what the schools are trying to do is set up co-teaching environments. And the problem is, they don't have the opportunity to co-plan. And so, co-planning is more important than co-teaching. I'm just gonna say that. Because, because if we don't co-plan around all kids, then all teachers can't teach all kids. And so first of all, legally, it's one of our best ways to document that shared expertise. And then secondly, we want, we want the shared expertise at the table to teach all our kids. So, the co-planning part will be very important. And then looking at, when we look at the referral rate in the special ed for African-American kids, it's high. I spent some time within the report talking about cultural relevance and really understanding what it is. It's not a curriculum. It's how we teach. It's who we are. It's how we understand different cultures. And so, um, there was, there was some code words going on about kids of color. And, and so it's really important to be able to have conversations about race and to have it within our school communities, to have it across our kids, and, and to understand the complications with that as well. And so, um, there's certainly a variety of information out there. And then I finished it up with a professional development that goes around supporting all of the teaching and learning at tier one in a proactive way and supporting the development of teams at the district level, building level, and teacher-based level. There were some concerns, and I'm just moving into funding and compliance real quickly. There were concerns about teachers not having what they need to have in order to support student IP's. It is, it is something that is difficult in the sense of sometimes it's how we write our budgets. But it will be important to be able to have a framework so that teachers can define what they need in order to deliver an IP and, and order those materials in an expedited way. I did add for compliance as far as tying the IP at a glance with personalized learning plans. There was some conversation about that in this district. And so anytime, which is why when we merge teaching and learning for all kids together, anytime we can do something that actually mirrors across all populations of kids, it helps us go forward in a very comprehensive, kind of more cohesive manner. So, in a nutshell, twenty minutes. I, I wanna talk a little bit about the appendices. Um, appendix A is an overall appendice that we talk about, a little bit more about proactive services. Appendix B is, um, an appendix about actually building those teams at the district level and at the building level and at the teacher-based level and some of the work that the teams do in the detail. Because, um, I obviously just really, in a, in a very cursory manner, covered the goals, but the details are in there.
Mrs. Reddell?
Are you able to comment on what we adopted a few years ago called the, I believe it was the Wisconsin Counseling Model?
Well, the, the Wisconsin Counseling Model is great. So, I, I mean, here's, here's the thing. It, it's, it's really about serving all learners. And so the, and I talk a little bit, I use the language from the Wisconsin Counseling Model, but I also use some language from national models within the report because some of the hiccups are merging the expectations of all experts within the school community going in the same direction around kids. There was, there was confusion about counselor roles within the district. And I know that the grant, um, you know, the grant's a huge gift for this district. And so how do you use that grant and the work of the grant to leverage proactive services forward, I think has to be revisited. But there's nothing, you know, this is, this is a district, you know, doing evaluation here. I, I do wanna say it was an absolute honor because it's, it's a district that can tie, you have so many pieces of the puzzle, gluing them together in a way that, that can really build some momentum. Then, you know, just, Wauwautosa needs to be the leader around high achievement of, of students with disabilities, of color, and of poverty. Just do. It would, it would, you're certainly capable of it. Teachers are capable of it. The administrators are capable of it. It really is unifying the work under how. What do we believe in? Do, and then how are we gonna align our work for that so that we're consistent? And there, and that, those conversations are happening. So I'm not saying that you're starting from scratch. Uh, and what the analysis, the evaluation tried to do is not throw the baby out with the bathwater. So take what's working really well and then give the other pieces of information to move forward. But it's, it's an exciting time to pull all the roles together, including the counselors.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm curious, you mentioned that it was two percent of students that were really intellectually disabled, right, roughly? And that, if I understood you correctly, when you spoke with people, it was like, well, you know, we don't put them into, like you said, the AP courses when there's some that are capable of it. How would you go about changing that?
Well, it's not that staff don't put them in there. Or- It's that, it's, it's, it's the pattern of practice. And so it's not a, it's, I'm just gonna say it's not a fault. It's not, it's not negligence. It's not that they're not putting them in there. It's that, it's how we set up instruction for, for kids with disabilities. And it's not just in Wauwautosa. It has been everywhere. So often what happens is they, they're in lower-track classes and they're in pull-out classes. And so they don't have the information- -to, to actually flourish in, in AP classes. And so how do we go forward with that? Is to really take a strong look at the core of instruction and, and not move kids out of the core instruction, but keep them in there, but teach it in a universal way. And what I mean by a universal way is you start with how kids learn. And so teachers work together as a core group of teachers based on how kids learn, set up instruction, that you have the curriculum framework. You have the standards. You have all that. And so the gift of teaching is, and the art of teaching is the instructional piece around the how. We know, we know what kids know, kind of. We don't always pay attention to how they learn. And so, so we have to get more practice at how we learn and set up the instruction in that way. And so that's what universal design helps us do. And the more we do that, the more students are with disabilities, African-American and students of poverty are gonna stay in the core curriculum.
Thank you.
Mr. Crowder?
Uh, thank you. It was a very nice presentation. I, it's nice to talk about students here, so it's good. Um, one thing that came to mind is I, students, parents of students with disabilities are among the most passionate parents in schools. I'm just wondering if you had a chance to talk with, to parents in our district and how they perceive things are going for them?
I did not have a chance to talk to them as much. So, many of your staff are also parents. And so it came out in a variety of ways there. Um, but I did not talk to any of the major groups.
And one thing that I've often wondered about, you, you talked about pulling students out of class for remediation is not necessarily being a good thing. But, and I'll use reading as an example because I get emails from a group that's involved with reading instruction and dyslexic students and things like that. And, and I don't, I'm trying to figure out what you're saying in terms of reading instruction, so if you have
You pick the hardest area, but okay.
But if you have examples where students, you know, you can diagnose a specific deficit and there are specific programs that can fix that deficit. Why isn't pulling a student out to fix that? How is that different from what you're talking about, or is it the same?
Well, it's a great question. So, so, you know, the, the question is if we can pull kids out and we can give them instruction that's, that we usually discuss in, in a skill-building way, that we can teach them skills, that they can actually gain success. Here's, so yes, some of that works. Some of it doesn't work. And what we find is it's not, it's not working longitudinally. So, I did some longitudinal analysis and if you track your data from, well, I actually did not do it. I had a lot of assistance from the staff here, so, correction. But if you track, and this is true nationally as well. The kids that are pulled out, what I had said before, is the students that are pulled out are the furthest behind. And so when we track our third graders to high school, we're not seeing, when they were pulled out, we're not seeing them in AP classes. So the question is why not? And so, we all need to have this conversation. This is not, this is, there isn't a recommendation in here that should happen overnight. It should be very pragmatic, it should be very planful. I think first steps would be that, that a team actually create an action plan going forward and then backchain it. But the, the point is, the district may want to pull out more data on that and really track some kids longitudinally and see. I couldn't find any successful patterns in the data I looked at for this district. And there aren't any successful patterns nationally. What we have nationally are patterns of increases based on specific remediation that you can see student success within the next two or three years. So the question is sustainability. Is it sustainable? And, and I think the second question is, is it, is it transferable? So, can they take that and apply it to their science class? And so, what many people are saying is, yes, you can do some skill-building instruction. It's not throwing the baby out with the bathwater. But how can you actually do it within an environment that everyone sees what it is? And it can be practiced during science class. And it can be practiced during math class. And it can be practiced, because when we do it someplace else, we haven't co-created it. And so we can't apply it consistently seven hours a day. And so, kids learn best when it's done in a synthesized manner for them. So it's not, it's not ruling all of what's working out, but it's, it's saying, let's, let's track it, let's make sure it's really working.
So does that mean then, if you're going to track it, that, that those programs could be more effective if they're outside the regular school day? So the students stay in their classes all the time, but they're getting extra instruction or different instruction outside that?
It's, you know, most of that, most of the instruction of pull-out is, is quality instruction. Why wouldn't we do it within the general day? So it's a, it's really about looking at our core instruction and how do we teach it in a proactive way? Teachers are doing this in your system. It's not that they're not doing it. But they need help to bring it up. And, and they need staffing patterns to, to support that. So, it's, it's not about adding on to the day, but it's taking high-quality instruction, which works for kids. Having teams of teachers have time to, in a, in a, in a very careful and reflective way, plan for it based on how kids learn. That's what it is. So that you can take that information, teachers know how to apply that within a general ed setting, they do. They do it all the time. What they don't have is co-planning time to actually really be planful about it.
Okay. I'm, I'm just really pleased to hear you talk about the, how the quality of the overall educational program affects all the students, especially the struggling students. Because that's something I've thought about, kind of suspected, but didn't know that there was real support for that. And I've, I've often thought of the reading program in that way, that, that best, if we have the best reading program possible and try to reach as many kids as possible, you know, through the early elementary years, that that should affect struggling students as well.
It should, within the core curriculum, yes.
And the other thing that I agree with you on that I've thought about a lot is we look a lot at, at AP scores, number of students in AB classes, ACT scores and things like that as a measure of a district. But I've often felt if we want to grow our district, we should be able to show, as you suggest, that we do a better job with the struggling students. And I think that's a much better way to make a reputation for ourselves.
Well, it was nice to walk into a district that had that as a goal. I mean, it made it easy, so.
All right, thank you.
It seems to me, tell me what you think, that if, if the culture of a district embraces these recommendations, that there will be, shall I call them collateral benefits on the students who aren't struggling.
So, here's what
Well, that there are students who haven't been labeled as having disabilities, who are actually high-performing. But they have some struggles of their own. And they tend to be identified as such. Perhaps there's been a problem in the family, perhaps the student stutters, perhaps many different things. But it seems to be me that this culture, this paradigm, when applied to everyone, will help everyone.
Absolutely. When teachers get to work together to share their expertise and co-plan around all learners within their classrooms, all kids benefit. So, all student achievement should go up.
Thank you. Mrs. Rios.
So it seems like one of the essential parts of this is the co-planning, right? And that's, that's a big task. So, to me, that seems like the hardest thing, right, to give that time. Right. So have you run across districts that are doing that and doing it well? And what are they, how are they addressing that?
There are, and
Do you have that?
There, districts are, and it's interesting, and I, I can't remember the gentleman's name, but I hope I wrote it in the report. Who actually spends a lot of time working with districts on creating often what was time for intervention? Which most districts are trying to say, you know, the core plus more should be, why don't we do the core the way it should be done the first time? Versus adding on the core plus more. But the hiccup has always been the co-planning. So instead of creating those intervention blocks, but create blocks of planning time. And if I didn't write it in the report, I'll get it to you, but I can't remember his name. Verona Public Schools is working with him right now to create blocks of co-planning time at their high schools. Middle schools and elementary schools for that matter. Do you know his name?
I can't figure his name either.
Yeah. Really sorry, it's been a long day.
Thank you, thank you.
So it's really asking him to do the same work that he's always done differently.
Right.
So we tend to, tend to, well, we tend to pay attention to where students are instead of where teachers are. And what we're talking about is, it's really about what the adults do.
Right.
Versus, because when the adults are able to do what they do well, kids are more successful.
Mrs. Randall.
Actually, my question is probably more to Dr. Erdel, but, so, what are your plans for using this audit? When, how, are you going to be thinking about staffing recommendations?
Well, we could have a request to the board president to have regular reports on the implementation plan and I'll
No, I mean really, and
I'll duck this one too and say I'm gone in two minutes.
I can answer your question. I mean, the, the plan really, I think, if you look back and look at any of the audits we've done in the past, including our financial audit each year. Take an audit for what it is. It's an attempt to expose your weaknesses. We do a financial audit, they don't go through looking for the things we're doing right, they're looking for the things we're not doing so well. And the financial things you're doing wrong. Clearly, there's some opportunities in this. Dr. Futura was very nice and pointed out some of the very positive things we're doing. But I look and say, what are the opportunities? And I, she has, unless she's changed her mind from my previous discussion, but been willing to work with us beyond just the audit and help us develop a plan, work through it, put an action plan together. But my idea is that we'll have a team of people, teachers, administrators, to really look down on how does this fit within our, our mission, our goals? And take into account recommendations and move this forward. It's not something we, we can bite off all at once and say, okay, let's, there's 26 recommendations, let's do them all now. It's kind of like the 80-some-page long-range plan. It is, I mean, it's really a long-range plan, but in the short term, I think, I think there's some low-hanging fruit we can address. And, but I, I want to get other people involved in that process to make those decisions on how we're going to move forward with it, but opportunities.
So I'm hearing you're going to create a short-range plan and a long-range plan? And that we will have outside assistance?
Just one plan with a timeline.
Okay. And I want to take one second to acknowledge the directors of student learning and student services for all of the things that were pointed out. Thank you for all your work. And I'm so impressed, I mean, what you're saying, you know, we've been hearing from our staff. So you obviously got them to trust you in their interviews. And, you know, I think it's, I think it's great that, that this came from the professionals that are delivering the services. So, thank you.
You know, we could have like a joint report on the career ladder evaluation process to be sure that the recommendations of the, this executive summary are included in the attributes we look for in our leadership evaluation.
I see what you're getting at, superintendent of evaluation.
It all, see, it all works together. It's not just accident. We thought, you know, these two big items on one agenda, oh boy, this is going to be a long meeting. But you know, it's like, here's the, the staff evaluation and here's what the staff needs to do. So, it seems to me it's one conversation.
And don't forget the budget part.
Well, sure, yeah. No, no, you're, you're very serious. That's, that's true. You know, if I may, I read this executive summary and some words in here I said, ouch. And then I said, oh my, these things are helping my granddaughter somewhere else. And these things helped my daughters a few years ago. And gee, these are good ideas. We need to embrace them. And if we say ouch, it probably means we should say ouch. And we need to do something to move our culture forward.
I have to add, you know, when I was asked to do this, I asked, you know, how courageous do you want to be? Do you want, do you want the highest, the best quality? So that'd be courageous. And so there are some, you know, there are some points in here that, that aren't going to feel that good. They're not going to be comfortable for people. And, and what I would ask is that the groups look at it and say, do we want to be part of the problem or do we want to be part of the solution? Because that's, that's the chance we have right now, is, is to how we do the work forward. And so I think it's, it's good timing, it seems to be, in this district.
Okay. Well, is there any other board questions or comments? Any community comment? Well, thank you very much. We hope to be able to provide you with a, a report that honors what you've done for us here.
Thank you very much.
And with that, we will move to our last item on the agenda. The superintendent's report on butterflies. It just sounds kind of fun, doesn't it?
Well, let me, no.
But, um, no, this is a very serious thing, actually. And I had saw in a Milwaukee Journal Sentinel article Oh yeah, while I'm yakking here, we'll fire up the technology for you. Please, so please go ahead. Probably need to open the lid. Yeah. You know more than me, I'm sure, with your background. But, but I, I was reading a Journal Sentinel article about the, the threats to the monarch butterfly. And I know Wauwautosa has a, has a very active support program for butterfly habitat. And the article stated that, among other places, schools, school districts can participate in activities that will help support the butterfly habitat. And that would be good for all of us. So, considering Wauwautosa's community traditions and that we are a school district with, according to our strategic plans, some civic responsibility, community responsibilities. I thought this would be a, and we have a lot of space, actually, where we plant things. We have grass and we have some kind of shaggy-looking hedges, actually, outside of Fisher Building here. I thought we could do better. So with that, I called Barb Agnew and she graciously offered to come and do a presentation for us on opportunities for butterfly-friendly plantings on school grounds. And you brought Jim Price with you as well, and so please take it away.
All right. Thank you to the school board, Dr. Erdel and staff for inviting us to present and giving us this time in your schedule. My name is Barb Agnew, Chair and Founder of the Friends of the Monarch Trail. Jim Price is the co-founder of the Friends of the Monarch Trail. We've been asked to address the plight of the monarch butterfly migration in eastern North America. Check the airflow. Okay.
So that's not a butterfly message, that's a technology message.
It's not even on my screen.
Yeah.
It has something to do with
All right.
Well, that's a first, so I'll, you've done things no one else can do. Oh, there it goes, it's gone, okay. All right. Well, we apologize for the technical problems and
And we'll let them work on that. I can, I think, read through some of these things as they're working on the technology. We've been asked to address the plight of the monarch butterfly migration in eastern North America. The local populations here in Wauwautosa and what the Wauwautosa School District can do to help in their recovery. Go ahead.
All right. For those who, and anyone in the room who may not know much about monarch butterflies here, just really quick facts. All northern monarchs, that is in the north, in the eastern part of the United States in the temperate zone, have to migrate in the fall. There's no stage in the monarch life cycle that can survive a freezing temperature. So they all have to migrate to Mexico in the fall. A single generation of monarchs migrates up to 2,500 or more miles from their furthest population, which is Nova Scotia, Canada. Monarchs lay their eggs only on milkweed plants and milkweed is the only food that their larva can eat. So that is absolutely critical to their reproductive cycle, they cannot survive without it. Adult monarchs, the butterflies themselves, eat exclusively the nectar of flowering plants. I should say almost, they, just to avoid inaccuracy, they're occasionally, very rarely seen puddling in water or in someplace. But they have to have the sugars from flower nectar. And they may be dependent on some native wildflowers. In especially the fall migration, they seem to seek out certain wildflowers. And it may be that there are certain minerals, chemicals, compounds that they have to have. And finally, contrary to popular belief, monarchs are not immune to all predators. In fact, they are not immune to most predators in their little world, where mites and spiders and all kinds of things do in fact eat them. Famously, certain birds won't eat them because of the poisons that they derive from milkweed. But only about two out of 400 original eggs laid will hatch, survive the larval stage, survive the pupal stage, and survive long enough as adults to reproduce. But if two children from two parrots survive to adulthood, there is equilibrium in a population. Unfortunately. Oh, next slide. Eastern monarchs cover the entire, everything from the Rocky Mountains to Nova Scotia, as I said. And all migrate to one place. But it's hard to see, but up here, there is a small dotted white line, it's really almost invisible on this, on the screen. But it covers basically the upper Midwest. That has been identified That has been identified as where most of the monarchs come from. This is the highest reproductive, uh, the most productive place for monarch butterflies in the nation, and it runs from about the middle of Nebraska to, uh, western Pennsylvania. It includes southern Wisconsin. This is what the, hmm?
Okay. A population in decline. The overview on local populations. Wauwautosa stands on an important migratory...
Wait, wait, you're way ahead of us.
Am I? Okay, all right.
We should have practiced once more. This simply is, is, uh, the, um, twenty-year cycle of, uh, the measured population of monarch butterflies, and as you can see, it's in a constant state of decline. And the conclusion that has been drawn by not just us, but research scientists all over the country, is that the entire migration, uh, the entire population of, uh, eastern American butterfly, monarch butterflies, is in critical peril of extinction. And it's mainly because of, uh, conversion of grasslands that support, uh, both milkweed and nectarine plants into cropland, especially since, uh, the advent of ethanol and corn as fuel. People are planting, are just tearing up pastures and planting corn. They're planting them in genetically modified, uh, crops that are herbicide resistant, uh, familiarly known as roundup, uh, roundup-ready, uh, that, uh, milkweed and other nectarine plants cannot survive, even on the verges of these. Urban sprawl contributes. Climate change has caused immense problems with freak storms, uh, like have never been seen, that have hit monarchs in Mexico. Drought cycles that have decimated the population, uh, as they try to advance or migrate across Texas during drought years, for instance. Decline of pollinator species, uh, bees, native bees, honeybees, uh, you name it, that actually promote the spread of milkweed and of other nectarine plants. And there may be other factors that we yet need to learn about. Now...
Okay. Wauwautosa stands on an important migratory flyway for many birds and the monarch butterfly in the fall. A rare annual phenomenon occurs here on the county grounds, an overnight roosting site for migrating monarchs, sometimes by the thousands. Over the past several years, the number of monarchs roosting at this site has declined in about equal proportion to the amount of habitat that has been lost on the county grounds. The grounds illustrate what is happening throughout the U.S. It's a microcosm of the direct relationship of monarch populations and the loss of habitat. The final numbers arriving in Mexico for this winter have been calculated to be the lowest since they began calculating. Scientists are now saying that without a multifaceted and herculean effort, we will lose the epic migration. Last autumn, no more than a handful of butterflies were observed here on the county grounds. This reflects local habitat loss combined with all of the other challenges facing the monarchs. With effort, energy, and education, we can reclaim some of that area and once again have a spectacular migration here in Wauwautosa. The Friends of the Monarch Trail, uh, group began in two thousand and six to preserve the county grounds' roosting site and the monarch migration in general. We have made great strides by being granted an eleven-acre habitat conservancy zone surrounding the historic Eshweiler Buildings. Wilson School STEM students contributed to this major success by writing letters to the Milwaukee County Board. They had gone out on field trips and, um, did many science projects out there, it was wonderful, and felt the need to try to preserve it. So their letters contributed to our being able to save the eleven acres. We continue to work with Milwaukee County, UWM, the Wisconsin DOT, and the city of Wauwautosa to restore as much po, habitat as possible. But this will still fall short of the original area lost. That is where Wauwautosa School District can really help, uh, in, in offsetting how much acreage has been lost. We did persuade the Department of Transportation, for the first time, to include common milkweed in its revegetation of the zoo interchange roadside right-of-ways, uh, so that will help as well.
Um, may I?
Yeah.
Inject here that Dr. Erdl has mentioned to me that there's a, a parcel of some size in our district where the DOT has agreed to plant it as we wish? Could you describe that?
They are putting up a, a barrier, um, by West High School, from West High School all the way close to Burley, so there's gonna be a berm that's gonna need some sort of plantings. And the DOT has been very, very good about working with us and basically saying they will, they will do whatever we want as far as vegetation goes. And I think it's gonna be in a slope that's gonna be tough to maintain, so this would be the concept of something that we would...
Native pollinator plantings.
So there is a specific thing where we can start? There is a, an outcome of this collaboration here tonight? Okay.
Perfect, all right.
My turn. Okay, uh, how the Wauwautosa Schools can help. And before I, the next slide, I just wanna say that on this slide, uh, those are Wilson students, this was a Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, uh, piece that, um, they came out, uh, the Wilson students have been out there all the time. Couple of times just happened out there and run into them, uh, they're, really have spent a lot of time out there. The Wauwautosa Schools have actually already helped. These are Jefferson students in two thousand and four, releasing tagged monarchs that they raised in their classrooms. There are native gardens at Jefferson, there is, uh, I think a butterfly garden at Wilson, and there is already a prairie project, uh, at West High School that I think can be, uh, used as a starting point. It probably lack, it, uh, the last time I was out there, I didn't notice that it had any milkweed. All you have to do is add some milkweed, and you've got, you know, waystation. You can, I have actually spent a little time, uh, I, most of you know me, I've actually visited most, I think every, uh, school campus, uh, personally, but I spent some time on Google Earth looking, and I think every school can have at least a small area devoted to this, some can have larger areas. Jefferson is easily the smallest landscape in the district, and it already has native gardens that are fairly extensive. Monarch waystations are really just what, you know, people are already familiar with as butterfly gardens or rain gardens that incorporate enough milkweed to add, you know, put the focus on monarchs. They have nectar plants to provide, uh, fuel for the adults as well. What is required of the schools is space, of course. There's very little funding that needs to be involved in this if you have commitment to do it, because you can, uh, round up parents, you can round up teachers, you can, uh, round up staff, uh, if the principal is engaged and committed to this, uh, you know, even community members outs, outside of the school will get involved if they know it's going on. But it is not a maintenance-free, uh, free-for-all. You know, you can get donations, you need to buy a few plants, you need to get some, landscaping work done, a little excavation or something. Oftentimes, you can get those donated, but, uh, you have to commit the time and effort, uh, throughout the growing season, or, as I think Ms. Randall may remember...
Jefferson?
The gardens at Jefferson, uh, won an award after they were installed, and three years later, they were getting complaints. They have to be maintained, or they will, uh, become perceived as an eyesore. They also don't teach everything all by themselves. You have to make a commitment to making this a learning environment if you want to get more out of it than just helping the insects. And of course, we're talking about generations of rebuilding there.
I'll interrupt real quickly. I did send an email with the links to some of those wonderful programs that, uh, there's one at the UW Arbor Reedum in Madison that has put together learning programs that can, I guess, um, help guide how to teach within these gardens. So I think, uh, you will all have that as a, as a link, um, the links to those places.
Besides doing gardens outdoors, it's really easy to raise monarchs indoors. Barb and I both do it. We've both done it in classrooms for many years. I did it at Jefferson forever, uh, in multiple classrooms. All you have to do is like an aquarium and enough milkweed to feed the, them, they pretty much take care of themselves. But you can learn a great deal from them, and kids get really engaged, in fact, I would use the word enthralled, and at the elementary levels, I would say one hundred percent enthralled. After the elementary grades, when you get into middle school and high school, uh, you don't have probably a hundred and percent engagement in gardening or rearing bugs. But there are great STEM opportunities, our Wilson kids also, by the way, already, they're already well into it. How, how do you engage older students and teachers at higher levels? You know, we already have partnerships with UWM, we're talking, you know, we mentioned the possibility of a UWM research field station, uh, out there. There's no reason that Wauwautosa Public Schools can't work with those people to do things like, uh, population, uh, statistical analyses, uh, climate studies, environmental engineering. We have, uh, on the county grounds, we have these brand-new bio-infiltration swales that really are, you know, nobody really knows what's gonna happen. It's a, it's a new design. So there are many things, uh, that, uh, more advanced students can become involved in and learn, and, uh, as, I'm sorry, my intended, I don't know if he's still here, but I think, that, uh, is a Dr. Fraturo, uh, who just presented, um, mentioned that, uh, kids with exceptional needs, uh, one of the best things that you can do for them is environmental studies, get them outdoors, uh, get them out in nature, and, you know, what an opportunity. Finally, uh, the more involved you can get, uh, I mean, the least you can do at, at first, initially, is fabulous, anything you can do, we would consider fabulous. The more you can do, and the more you can put Wauwautosa at the forefront of movement that can have, uh, much broader implications, because, uh, as much as we wanna see it, and as much as we wanna help you do it, uh, having even fourteen butterfly gardens is not going to replace twenty-five million acres of, uh, you know, wild lands that has been converted over the past, uh, well, since the migration really was discovered only in nineteen seventy-six, and we have lost twenty-five million acres of wild land since then. So, you know, you really have to become an advocate and a partner in a larger movement, that's what I would say.
And, and I think you, you...
I took over for you.
You covered many of the things that I was going to, um, creating the summer field biology station, um, but also, you know, join, uh, our group or, or have people come in. We do guided tours, we have work projects and all of that, so that you can kinda just, um, get your feet wet a little bit to discover what it's about. It's, it, he said that people become, and little kids especially become enthralled. I say smitten, they are just, uh, science becomes this, this focus for them. So I, I really think that the monarch butterfly is, is iconic that way, and, and really can bring kids, uh, from being disinterested to being absolutely fascinated and, and wanting to learn and discover. In conclusion, the Wauwautosa Public Schools can be a very strong partner in monarch recovery, and we and our partners will be very happy to consider this the beginning of an ongoing effort. We're pleased to offer our assistance and guidance wherever needed to support the concepts and any other, uh, and any other concepts the Wauwautosa Public Schools may propose. And again, we, we thank you very much for, for having us, and can answer questions, whatever you need. Thank you.
Mrs. Randall?
I had one question. You talked about, last fall, there was only a handful of monarchs on the county grounds, um, but you, you think that you can have them, reattract them by building up?
Yeah.
So, I mean, once they leave an area, it's not...
No, they, they follow migratory paths.
Okay.
And the populations, once back in the U.S. in, throughout the summer, they, you know, they repopulate in, in huge numbers, and, and they all congregate as they head south in various areas. They seek out specific microclimates, high elevations, waterways. So the Menominee River meets the Underwood Creek, uh, turns east, and you've got this huge county grounds, the northeast quadrant there, and that is exactly where migrating things end up. So there used to be all of the nectarine sources, uh, out there, two-hundred-and-fifty acres, they would zero in on that, they'd spend the days out there feeding, and they would migrate, uh, they would roost in the two-tree areas that we have preserved. The population now is, is down so low that the, the two-tree areas have a few monarchs. That's representative of the population, not the location of where they migrate, the overall population.
Yeah, and to, to say that once, you know, once they've left an area, well, that's not, it's not like other, you know, it's not like birds or, uh, you know, migratory birds, for instance, you know, some of them can live for many years, and they literally teach their young, uh, and the young of the flock where to go. These are separated by five generations, they've never been here before.
Oh, okay.
You know, they don't know where they're going. They are attracted here for reasons that have to do with the elevation, uh, the microclimate of particular grove of trees, and just the general location within the state of Wisconsin. They're on a flyway that actually is followed by migrating monarchs as well as by birds. It's a, County Grounds is also a great place to go birdwatching in the fall, because they were in the spring, because the migration, uh, routes just pass through there.
It is, it is definitely...
They will come, they will come back if the general, if the greater population comes back, but we're in danger of losing them all. I mean, you know, I guess our, our, our message is imagine, you know, us, the last monarch, you know, they're gone, they're gone. They, they won't be extinct from the world because there are other populations elsewhere, but this migration is unique. It happens nowhere else, and they could literally disappear. The, the, the amount of space occupied by, uh, overwintering monarchs in Mexico this winter was a little bit larger than one football field, including the end zones. About one-point-six acres, that's all, all of the monarchs from the entire eastern United States, from the Rocky Mountains east.
And if you compare that to past years, when forty-five acres were covered by monarchs in Mexico, you can, you can see that the overall numbers have dropped that severely. And it is the, the trifecta of, of causes, and of course, development and loss of habitat because of that, and, uh, farming practices is, it's where, I guess, if we can offset that, and we are, we're offsetting it by replanting as much of the grounds as we can between the buildings and between the development projects, those biofiltration systems, if those can become established habitat, that will help offset that loss. I think, like I had said earlier, the, the comparison of what's happening throughout the U.S. is right here in this microcosm. We lost this many acres here, you can actually see it from, you know, the aerial shots, and the loss of monarchs is proportionate, so, it's a good learning thing that way, too, just because it's a microcosm.
Yes.
Um, it's, I think I'm learning, I've learned a lot, but I think the people that need to see this are like the teachers, so then they can, right, 'cause, you know, if a teacher doesn't know about this, they're not gonna share it, and it's great that the Wilson Schools go... it, and it's great that the Wilson School's going there, but how do we get the other schools to take field trips there? So what I'm wondering is how, do, does your group, when like the school, like Wilson goes there, is there someone there that's explaining things, or is that just their own initiative? And, and how do we get teachers to even see like, the, I mean, you don't need anyone to present it, but you just need to see the information and figure out how to take their classes, like at the elementary levels, to the county grounds?
Well, I think the, the reason we're here is to, to find a way to recover some of that lost area on school grounds, so that each of the schools can help replace some of it.
Right.
Because it's owned, it's privately owned now, there's a lot of transition going on. Our trail will be rerouted. Our group has continually worked throughout all of the transitions from construction to, to try and keep the public having access. But again, that may not be completely settled yet. This coming year, we, we will still have our events, we'll still have guided tours, and, and that is put up in posters in the library and everything else. I don't know if we can bring classrooms out there until the construction has ended. So, so that's where learning on the school grounds and, and creating these gardens on the school grounds is going to be a really proactive...
Right. I just thought, before, you know, every school goes and makes their own garden, right? Like having some exposure to...
There needs to be a next step here, and I think Board President Meyer mentioned the possibility of having some kind of task force, you know, that would probably include students, staff, teachers. We, we would be happy to conduct this as a longer, more detailed presentation, seminar, whatever, for a group that the school district could put together. And, you know, you need to, you need to think about what level of commitment that you're wanting to or willing to...
Well, I can take this on for myself, as far as facilitating. I can discuss with Dr. Erdl. Our educators are well aware of what kinds of programs take root and establish some sustainability in the, in the buildings and things like that, so we'll need their advice on what things work as far as a sustainable, ongoing program. The fast, for me, a fascinating thing about this is that you learn patience, that, you know, you plant something one year, it doesn't quite work. So you try it a little differently the next year, and suddenly it works, and the butterflies and the hummingbirds arrive. And it's where you used to have grass and some potted plants and some shaggy hedges. You end up with these silly-looking flowers that have butterflies and hummingbirds in them, and it's a lot more interesting, and it's very exciting for some people, and even for the photography buffs, the, a close-up of a monarch caterpillar is a pretty amazing photograph. You know, there's, it's, it's a lot more than what you think, and my wife found that out. There's one on my living room wall now. So I'll be in touch with you. Anyone who's interested in participating in this, please call me or email to me, Mike Meyer. The, my contact information is on the school board website, and I'm not exactly sure what we'll do, but we'll see what we can get started.
Sounds wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there any community question or comment for our presenters? All right. Well, thank you then. So with that, is, is there any community comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. It's 9:16. Mrs. Randall, thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Mrs. Fee, thank you. Mrs. Galante, please call the board.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Duros?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Reels?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?